Order this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors for a business meeting. Mr. Stevens, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Ms. Knoll?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. McGlinlin?
Here.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Here.
All present.
Okay. We're going to start with presentations, and I'm going to come down to the podium here to read this one for Mr. Tim O'Connor. Tim, if you'd come on up with me. Okay. This is a commendation for leadership and service for Mr. Tim O'Connor. Whereas Mr. O'Connor has served the citizens of James City County as a member of the Planning Commission from August 2010 to January 2025, and whereas Mr. O'Connor served as Chair of the Planning Commission in 2012, 2016, 2022, and 2024, and whereas Mr. O'Connor actively participated in developing two award-winning updates to the Comprehensive Plan, James City County 2015 Comprehensive Plan toward 2035, Leading the Way, and James City County 2045 Comprehensive Plan, Our County, Our Shared Future. And whereas in support of the development of these plans, Mr. O'Connor participated in the 2015 Planning Commission Working Group and the 2020 Planning Commission Working Group, and whereas Mr. O'Connor served on the Planning Commission's Development Review Committee and Policy Committee, and whereas Mr. O'Connor served as Chair of the Policy Committee in 2014 and Chair of the Development Review Committee in 2017, and whereas during Mr. O'Connor's service, the Planning Commission reviewed substantive updates to the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance and considered numerous legislative development cases. And whereas Mr. O'Connor was a graduate of the Virginia Certified Planning Commissioner Program, now therefore be it resolved that I, Chair of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, hereby honor and commend Mr. Tim O'Connor for the tremendous service he has given to the community, and witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the county of James City, Virginia, to be affixed on this 25th day of March 2025. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors of James City County wishes to express its gratitude and best wishes to Mr. O'Connor and his future endeavors. There's a lot of great work that has been going on, and this young man has done for the county. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You have the mic here, Matt.
That's hardly deserved, but Mr. Eisenhour, members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you. It's been a privilege to work for the county. You know, I think we've done a lot of good things, and I want to thank Ms. Istanis and Mr. Holt. Their staff has always been really helpful and supportive. So, again, I appreciate the recognition, and it was a privilege to serve. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gro, who did it for the community. Yeah, our next presentation, once we get everybody back. Oh, there we go. It will be the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Update. Mr. Bob Lunn, Director, Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District.
Well, thank you, Chair Eisenhour. Good afternoon, members of the board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, and residents both here and watching from home. I am Bob Lunn, one of two directors elected from James City to represent us at the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District, and we're here to provide a brief report about colonial accomplishments and efforts in James City. Our spring newsletter should be in your package and is available on our website along with our annual report for the prior fiscal year, which you received several months ago. I welcome your questions. There we go. Okay. Soil and Water Conservation Districts are political subdivisions of the Commonwealth of Virginia, supporting and encouraging voluntary conservation efforts. The Colonial District includes James City and three other counties, plus the city of Williamsburg, with two directors elected from each. It contains 825 square miles and is home to about 175,000 people. Most annual funding is committed to specific efforts and comes from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Colonial continues complementing our agricultural conservation work with increased urban and suburban efforts. Local government funding and grants enables us offering more to our residents than the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Agricultural Cost Share Program. James City has about 3,150 acres of crap land. These programs enable the conservation practices by defraying costs and allowing us to offer technical assistance. The facilitated practices shelter topsoil from erosion and reduce nutrient runoff into our watersheds, thus both protecting farmland for future generations and our waterways for fishing and swimming. Reducing sediment and other nutrient fuels to our waterways diminishes incidence of algae bloom, which can cause fish kills and be toxic. In the right spot. You may recall that in 20... Okay, there we go. You may recall that in 2023, we completed a pair of two-year projects to address major erosion issues on two farms. Other years are more typical, absent such challenges. We currently anticipate another bump in fiscal year 2026 or 2027. Our farmland benefited from environmental improvement practices funded by Colonial over the past five years, most from these top four, especially nutrient management and no-till agricultural practices. Colonial also conducts assessments on our agricultural lands annually under a cooperative agreement with James City County, supporting our county Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance. Conservation planning to address Bay Act issues is an example of necessary technical support and training, no longer state-funded. This is the only structural practice currently in our James City pipeline. With project survey complete, design is now being developed. We anticipate construction beginning this summer. On completion, reimbursement for this project will again bump up Virginia Agricultural Cost Share reimbursement. Colonial facilitated Virginia's Dominion Envire-thon, an environmental conservation-themed competition for high school students, and again sponsored the Jamestown High School team at regional and state levels. This year, our regional competition will be held at Dory Park and Recreation Center in Maricopa on the 15th of April, followed by the state competition on May 18th and 19th at Mary Washington University. The Virginia Conservation Assistance Program addresses non-agricultural issues. Through it, Colonial provides technical advice and financial assistance for our property owners installing or implementing conservation practices. This program focuses on smaller projects than James City County usually does and can provide complementary cost-share funding to other programs, such as the James City Clean Water Heritage Programs. In the last five years, $49,533 spent for conservation improvements by our homeowners, HOAs, and schools was matched more than 150% through this program. Ten projects were approved for properties in James City last year, reflecting increased interest and greater colonial capability to address growing interest, including the native planting project at Brickyard Landing Park in Toronto, for which we were able to fully fund the $9,165 Phase II planting of conservation landscaping, given the site's public nature. Funding carries a 10-year obligation, applicant to maintain, and district to inspect. Supported practices redirect or manage rainwater so it soaks into the ground, improving groundwater reserves or use by plants, thus reducing stormwater contribution to floods, erosion, and pollution of our ponds, streams, and rivers. These were the most common practices. Turf Love is the program for encouraging environmental responsible lawn care, which includes applying the right amount of fertilizer based on a soil test result and using irrigation systems efficiently to minimize wasted water. Just enough fertilizer improves swim and fishability by reducing nutrient fuel stimulation of the algae blooms in our waterways. Three staff members are state-certified in turf and landscape nutrient management. Since February 2019, Colonial completed 393 certified nutrient management plans for private properties and also 41 for county properties, 90 of which were completed in 2024. With the appreciated support of James City Williamsburg Master Garden of Volunteers, Turf Love teaches homeowners how to maintain their lawns in an environmentally responsible manner. We appreciate James City County's support for these programs, which so far this fiscal year facilitated Colonial and James City making at least 29 site visits, securing 13 project approvals for properties in James City, already 30% more than last year, also preparing 32 Turf Love nutrient management plans and two Turf Love educational events. Colonial staff worked closely with staff from James City County Stormwater and Resource Protection Division and James City Service Authority to ensure county funds are used efficiently and effectively to best serve and support our residents as they work towards conserving their surrounding environment. I respectfully request your continued support of these programs for James City, our residents, and organizations, so Colonial can continue contributing to the preservation and improvement of our county environment, including swim and fishability of our local waterways for recreation and other uses benefiting both our residents and tourists. Colonial values our partnership with the county immensely, and will continue to strengthen it through new conservation initiatives and opportunities. Colonial has two staff working on Virginia Conservation Assistance and other urban programs. Our full-time outreach specialist is improving our communications about offered programs such as Turf Love, Virginia Conservation Assistance, Virginia Agricultural Cost Share, and more like the Alliance to Advance Climate Smart Agriculture. While impacted by federal freeze of funds, we continue working with partners and participate in pilot programs to enable better service to James City and improve the quality of water in our surrounding rivers and the Chesapeake Bay through projects in our county as well as elsewhere in our district and region, and with our efforts to secure grants and other funding to complement public money from Virginia and James City County. Local funds can help strengthen our grant applications, which often require matching contribution. The Colonial District is a resource with unique knowledge and tailored programs complementing others given continued support. In closing, I want to again thank James City County Stormwater Resource Protection and James City Service Authority for their support over the years, all our other partners, program participants, and volunteers who so generously give of their time. This concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lunn?
Just a quick one if I could, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thanks, Mr. Lunn, for your presentation and for your service on the district and Mr. Zabinski as well. I know that it must consume a lot of your time and energy, and we really appreciate the impact that it has. I was curious about the overall budget for the office and for the district, and whether that request for additional funding is James City-specific or for the local governments?
This is James City-specific. Okay. Any other questions?
Do you happen to know the total budget for the district?
For the district? Jim? Pop up for a minute so people can see you. And thank you for recognizing Stephen as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Our next presentation is going to be the Stormwater Program Advisory Committee presentation. Matt Wolsey.
Good afternoon, members of the board, and thank you for your time, and thank you to county staff for allowing the time and the schedule for this presentation. My name is Matt Woolsey. I am the Chair of the Stormwater Program Advisory Committee, and I'd like to present to you today on the Stormwater CIP and the Clean Water Heritage Grant Program updates. As you know, the 2016 to 2035 Strategic Plan and the 2035 Comprehensive Plan resulted in a 2018 county budget that allotted money to the Stormwater Capital Improvement Program as well as the Neighborhood Drainage and Maintenance Grant Program. The five-year 2018 to 2022 CIP program had proposed funding for nine projects, and by 2024, 17 additional projects had been funded. On this slide, it includes the projects that have been funded through the CIP, many of which are finished and constructed, some of which are currently in design and under construction. The chart in this slide shows the current status of the Stormwater CIP and the Clean Water Heritage Grant broken down by each district. As you can see, 26 different CIP projects were spread throughout all five districts for a total of $16.5 million worth of total cost, approximately $7 million of which was sourced through outside funding such as SLAF grants or VDOT cost sharing. As you can also see, approximately 190 Clean Water Heritage Grant projects have been completed from fiscal year 16 to 2024, with a total program cost totaling $5 million, with the grant funding match being $2.2 million. Through the CIP and the Heritage Grant Program, this has resulted in millions of dollars of worth of health and safety benefits to watersheds, ecosystems, and neighborhoods countywide at reduced costs to the county. Looking forward to the next five to 10 years, the county has produced seven watershed management plans, five of which, the Dyaskin, the Powhatan, Skimino, Ware, and Yarmouth, have identified at a very high level 355 different projects that could be potential capital improvement projects. These range from stream restoration projects, BNP retrofits, new BNP's and stream corridor projects. This is an example of the Stream Restoration Project candidates that were identified in the Powhatan-Yarmouth-Dyaskin-Ware and Skimino watershed plans. 93 stream restoration projects were identified in these plans for potential projects, and they were ranked and prioritized under numerous factors, including estimated cost and impacts that the water quality would have on each of these watersheds. This is a high-level prioritization and just a starting point for county staff. These rankings did not include many real-world factors such as constructibility, easement acquisition, property ownership, and the like that will impact viability of potential projects. Just starts, again, this list serves as a starting point for county staff to perform further investigation and scrutiny into these projects in order to establish future CIP projects. So this map shows some of those stream restoration projects that were identified overlaid through the Berkeley District. The red lines represents the stream restoration projects identified in those watershed plans. Similarly, this is the stream restoration projects identified in the Jamestown District, the Powhatan District, the Stonehouse District, and then the Roberts District. Those are primarily impacted by College Creek and Skift Creek watershed management plans, which have not been produced yet, but will be produced in the future. Similar to stream restoration projects, 112 BNP projects were identified in those watershed plans, 19 of which were prioritized on similar rankings to the stream restoration projects. Again, want to emphasize that these are high-level rankings that will need to be investigated further in order to properly identify which of these are viable projects. This shows the BNP retrofits over the Yarmouth Watershed District, and this shows the Powhatan Watershed BNP retrofits. And again, the Roberts District does not show BNP retrofits at this time due to the College Creek and Skift Creek watershed management plans, which are to be developed. So as you can see, there are a lot of exciting opportunities for future CIPs and operational initiatives with clear plans for county staff to move forward to execute these opportunities. In order to further help tackle these goals and initiatives, the county has several goals in place. One is staffing two positions, one being CIP Staff Lead and Grant Writer. This position is already advertised and looking to be filled at this time. The other is a watershed planner to work directly with the CIP lead to assist in tackling these initiatives. Another goal is to develop a countywide resiliency plan in order to expand the review across watershed boundaries and build off of the analysis that have been performed in these watershed plans. This plan has been approved by the board, a grant application, excuse me, for this plan has been approved by the board on January 14th and 2025 in order to produce this plan using funds from the Community Flood Preparedness Fund. In this plan, it can include operational, specific operational initiatives identified in the watershed management plans that are not necessarily CIP projects. This can include conducting an assessment of the approach roads to Hicks Island Road Bridge in order to assess the flood risks from the Dyaskin Creek. This could also include quantitative flood modeling to better understand flash flooding and riverine risks just outside of tidal surge areas, and it can also include programs to encourage private landowners within these floodplains to raise the elevations of the first finished floor or other critical infrastructure around their properties to help flood proof. That, I'd like to take any questions that you have at this time.
So, thank you very much. The work that has gone on in the improvements have just been tremendous, and I am very appreciative and appreciative of the investment. And I had one question in that you, when you showed the Berkeley slide, there was... Where could I find, like, it's, I see it's got like ST1-8C. Can Stormwater give me more information about what might be, what more specific information regarding, it's right down there by Chenko's Grant?
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So, yes, these, that kind of information can be pulled directly from the watershed management plans that were produced and are publicly available.
Okay.
And then I can defer to county staff for giving further information.
But, but thank you, and thank you for all the work that you do. I really appreciate it. Stormwater is just a very important issue that we deal with, so.
Absolutely.
And do you happen to know the timeline for the still-to-be-completed watershed studies?
I believe that those are part of the 2028 initiatives that the, so I believe it's the 2028 timeframe, but Tony might be able to speak further than that.
I believe those projects are in the forecasted FY26 budget right now.
Great, great. And will they take into account the drainage work that's being done currently in Grove, for instance?
Yes, it would definitely incorporate, I mean, it would be an evaluation of both watersheds completely, so.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you again for all the work that the advisory committee puts in on this. I know it's a tremendously large project in a community like ours in particular, and since our citizens value so much the improvement of water quality, I think a very worthwhile effort, but it takes a lot of work.
Absolutely.
I just want to echo my appreciation for all the work you do on this because I think a lot of folks in the community maybe don't have a real big picture of all the effort that's going on to try to work with these issues in our county.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say, I went out to Wear Creek Manor the other day and actually see what you guys are doing, and it's amazing, amazing. Grace and I were out there, and a property owner met us, and it's a huge project.
Yeah.
But thank you. You know, we need to save our environment instead of letting it wash away down the hill.
Absolutely, I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our presentations. We move to the consent calendar. Today's consent calendar consists of the following items. Number one is the Acceptance of Fund, $6,189 Federal Asset Forfeiture Program. Number two, Appointment of Assistant Fire Marshal and Authorization of Fire Prevention Powers. Number three, Contract Award, $265,599 Jame City County Library Natural Playground. Number four, Contract Award, $448,715 Recreation Center Office Renovation Project. Number five, Flood Plane Management Plan Annual Report. Number six, Grant Award, $9,183 Circuit Court Records Preservation Program. Number seven is Minutes Adoption, and number eight is Resolution of Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance Violation at 110 Rivers Bluff. Does anyone wish to pull one?
I don't wish to pull, but one, I would like, I always prefer if we can introduce the fire marshal. I did have one question about the playground, just because there was such a huge difference in the bids that you received and just making sure that we are sure that we're going to be able to get the product that you're looking for with such a difference. So I wondered if, I see Sandy's here, I wondered if she could just answer that question.
Can I move the other?
Yes, sorry.
Items from the consent calendar?
Sure. We will move the other items. Which one are you going to pull?
So we're going to pull the...
Two and three, I guess. Well, I'm not pulling two, so it would be one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight.
We'll pull three for discussion.
We'll just pull three for discussion.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion to approve all but three. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
I just wondered. I just wanted to make sure, it was just such a, and I was so fortunate to go out and see what your vision is for this playground, which I think is very, just very cool, and so just want to make sure that you feel confident that with the difference in the bidding that you'll be able to get a product.
I appreciate that question. So we've been talking about this playground for a long time, and we did receive two bids that were very different, and county staff, Capital Projects, has reviewed those and determined that they are responsible bids that will meet our needs, and just wanted to say too that we appreciate Jame City County's support of this project. Certainly, staff time is involved with it. It is funded with private donation funds, so.
Thank you so much. With that, I would move on number three.
Item number three, okay. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
And if I can, just before we move on, to ask Fire Marshal Joe Davis to introduce our new Assistant Fire Marshal.
I wasn't going to let Joe get all dressed up.
Got to get you on camera.
Yeah.
Ladies and members of the board, I am Joe Davis, Fire Marshal. I'm pleased to introduce Dwayne Adams. He's a firefighter assigned to Station 2. He is a firefighter paramedic. Also has extensive training in fire inspections, fire investigations, public fire education. He comes to us at some point in time from Newport News where he was an Assistant Fire Marshal there, so he comes with experience, which is a bit unusual to come with the fire marshal experience as a firefighter. We're pleased to use him. He will assist the full-time staff in our office, and I'd like to welcome Dwayne to the office.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
Good to meet you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we move on to board discussions. Number one is an update from the General Register. Diana Marmann, our General Register is here. Diana, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Chairman Eisenhower, members of the board, and Mr. Stevens. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to meet with you all to give you an overview of what we did in 2024. I know this may come as a surprise, but it was a little bit of a busy year for us, so I just wanted to give you an update on where we are. We do consist of the Electoral Board, that is three members. We've got two members present here in the room today, our Vice Chair, Dr. Stolt, and then our Secretary, Ms. Kay Cheves. And we do, those do consist of three members of the part of the public, however, they are appointed by the, I'm sorry, appointed by the Circuit Court Judge, two representing the party of the sitting governor and one representing the party of the opposing governor, I'm sorry, of the opposing party. Director of Elections is myself, and I wanted to let you know that I just completed my 46th election since I have been here in 20 years, so a lot has changed in that timeframe. We have the Chief Deputy Director and the Front Desk Admin. That is the only position that is not assigned to our office yet that I will continue to request. That is integral to the ongoing operation of our office. And we also have it broken down into five sections. We've got the voter registration, voter outreach, and that's also elections staffing and elections training. We've got absentee by mail. That also includes our military overseas voters, and oftentimes we do include emailing ballots to all seven continents, and that is a very big treat for us to be able to accommodate voters all over the world that call Jame City County home. We have technology and infrastructure that goes to the election support. Early voting, that has been such a huge hit here in Jame City County and across the state, but we continue to be within the top 10 localities in the state for turnout within the Commonwealth. We also have ballot drop boxes that I'll talk about here in a little bit. We, ooh, touchy. The cat by mail, and that is pre-processing and post-processing. A lot of these are extra features. A lot of people say, oh, you only work two days a year, and I am here to tell you with all of these things that that is far from the case. Voting was active last year, eight of the 12 months. That is very strong statistics to show that we are constantly doing work for the public that people don't realize that we necessarily do. So we have six people in our office, and our Chief Deputy Sheila passed away at the beginning of November last year, and it has just been a complete changeover in the office beside myself and our infrastructure coordinator, and our new staff has jumped in with both feet. They have not had previous experience except for one, and they are just doing such an amazing job that you would have no idea that this was their first election year. We have nine on calls that continue to work in the office as needed, and those fluctuate depending on how much support we need within the office. Machine technicians, those four, actually answer to the Electoral Board, and we make sure that I am removed from that so that there is a question that goes directly to the board, so that there is a separation and there is a chain of custody and there is proof of a separation between me and the equipment, so that we do have the honesty and integrity of the elections process and the forefront of our minds at all time. Early voting. We have 45 days of early voting, and because we try to divide it up into shifts and we have so much activity and interest with our election officers that we do try to do shifts on the early voting process or the early voting timeframe, and that divided out to 881 shifts that we were responsible for manning and making sure we're covered for this past year. So that was, it's just a staggering number. For our central absentee precinct, we have 14 people that do that shift. Central absentee is, we count the ballots in, it's called pre-processing now. I'll talk about that in a few minutes, but the 14 allows us, it's no longer just Election Day when we count the ballots by mail, which we do count ballots by mail even if it's a close election or a runaway election, unopposed, and those 14 allows us to move those election officers around because now it is a weak dedication timeframe for just this one position. Election Day, we have 285 election officers that work on Election Day, and in November we actually had the PAGE program, and that was directly out of Jamestown High School, and that was 15 to 17-year-olds. They came in, they worked shifts, and it just invigorated the election officers for them to come in and have that young energy to be able to have them see what we do in, through the Election Day process. And then continuing education classes, we did 53 of those classes. We did those in conjunction with the Police Department and the Fire Department for Active Threat Stop the Bleed Trainings, and those have been amazing. So thank you to the Police Department and the Fire Department for providing those to us. We continue to see the praises of both departments throughout the state because not everybody is as lucky as us to have two great departments. Registered voters, from 2004 to 2024 in a 20-year time span... From 2004 to 2024, in a 20-year time span, we have almost doubled our numbers in registrant counts. We continue to have one of the highest registrant counts percentage-wise to public that other localities do, based on socioeconomic status, on the education of the voters wanting to be involved. And also now it is automatic registration at the DMV, which has been a huge help. Transactions processed. You would think that the Department of Elections would be so kind to say, hey, you've already registered once. Just like on Amazon, you've already placed one order, you don't need to do anything else. Are you, did you mean to do that again? No, we get the benefit and the privilege of re-registering the same person if they clicked it 10 times in the span of one minute. We have to process all 10 of those applications. So because of that, and there is no stopgap in that process within the Department of Elections website, we have done a total of transactions of 28,677 just last year. So the cancellation, request to cancel, that is typically voters that have, are deceased, are, have moved out of the state, are typically the two that we have. Information updates, that's just change of addresses. Denied applications, that's somebody that didn't complete an application or anything else. Duplicate applications, we had 1,240 applicants that were click happy on the mouse and that we had to process additionally. And then additional changes of 3,600. I do want to continue to point out, this continues to be a question in the public. Are the machines connected to the internet and can they be hacked? And I will say, no, they cannot be. They are not connected to the internet at any point, at any time. They are connected to a surge protector that is connected into the wall, and that is it. There is no internet connectivity for our voting machines. Just since 2017, we have handled over 150 different law changes that pertain just to elections. We have more elections laws that are proposed every year in the General Assembly than any other of the departments or boards. And it is the most junior of all of the boards within the House of Delegates and the Senate. Ballot on demand was implemented. We started that in January of last year, and that is put into the vote center only. We will never do it in the precincts. It is only the vote center, because there is so much that rides on making sure that we give the ballots, the correct ballot to the correct voter. And in, I'll talk about it in a few minutes, but there, the ballots, we have so many ballot styles now that it was only made sense for us to do that. Now that we have three elections under our belt, and we have proven that ballot on demand works for the early vote system, this will help us to reduce the cost of how many ballots we have to have on hand and on standby for Election Day. The vote center and its success on many levels has become a benchmark across the Commonwealth. And we have had the commissioner of elections come in, we've had elected officials come in. And the vote center is just an absolute blessing to the locality and to the voters. It has been a huge hit, the voters love it, and it's just been so smooth. So I do thank you for your support in helping us to obtain this new vote center that I will gladly stay at for the next 12 years until I retire. The only thing that we do have to contend with is the street signage for the building. That is the only obstacle, as we are not on a main building or main front on James, or on Monticello or on Ironbound. And that continues to be a problem. The voters have a little bit of a difficult time trying to find us, because we just have no signage currently. Absentee by turnout, by election turnout, absentee mail. In 2020, you see that those numbers are larger and they were combined. That is because the law did not go into effect until 2022, that we had to divide them out absentee by mail, early voting statistics. So we did continue to have large numbers throughout the entire process for 2024. And then Election Day, it just was a very impressive turnout for our voters. Mail ballots received, that did not go into effect again until 2022. And we have, it's called the post-election central absentee precinct, where we have to count any ballots that were received on, that are postmarked on or before Election Day and received on or before noon on the third business day. And you can see these numbers. In November, we had 278 that would have missed the deadline. That because that extended timeframe, we allowed 278 more voters to get their ballots into us. They did have the postmark on them, proving that they did mail it on or before Election Day. But a vast majority of that 278 was our military and overseas voters that mailed their ballots from South Africa or Holland, or it just didn't make, it's all over the world. So, and then provisional votes cast. You notice that that number went from 92 up to 860. That 860 is because we have same-day registration now. And on Election Day, that is what caused that number to go through the roof. Every one of those, that 860 represents, is a section of our office that we designed and we created a provisional sub-office within my office. And we have to research, we have to review, we have to process every one of those 860. I also have to go through the electoral board and have them review every one of the reasons that those 860 voters applied to vote on Election Day or early vote for same-day registration. And that is a huge amount of effort and time put into that process, was the 860. Curbside voting, we had 900, and this is just for November. We had almost 1,000 curbside voters. That represents between 15 to 20 minutes. Every single voter that comes through that does a curbside vote takes 15 to 20 minutes to process. And that is 900, times 914. That is why we have dedicated election officers just for that position, because it takes so much time. On Election Day, we had 203. That was divided out by 18 precincts. The in-person, 227 people requested ballots. That is a charge to us for the county, that voters are entitled to do it. They can request a ballot by mail and say, oh, I didn't get it in time, and I want to vote in person, because you took your time getting your ballot to me. But what is not recognized by the General Assembly, and we've tried to get this changed, is the start of early voting and the start, the day that we have to get ballots out in the mail is the exact same day. So of course, a vast portion of these voters come in and say, I didn't get my ballot, I want to vote in person. And that is why we had such a staggering number of 227. But that represents, the average ballot mailed right now is about $18 a ballot. And so you multiply that, and that's a lot of money that, of tax dollars that is used that was not necessarily needed. Same-day registrations, that went through the roof on Election Day, 538. And that was, we say that's the last ditch effort for changing registrations. However, 538 used it, so that is a helpful thing for the public. Requesting assistance for voters, 116. Other miscellaneous documents was 483. And then absentee ballots incomplete without the outer envelope. It's 144 ballots that were mailed to us that were not complete. And now we're required by law to cure the ballots, to see that everything is nice and a pretty bow before we turn it over to our central absentee precinct. And we had to do that for 144 voters that would have otherwise been denied. We have also gone through and sent out our standard mailed ballots for our first mailing to a vendor that has been vetted, has been interviewed, everything else. And those numbers, or those voters and ballots are now sent through a vendor, and they answer to us on the daily basis of how many ballots they sent, who they sent them to, the dates, and tracking information. We also have military overseas, and that stays in our office. If you look at our statistics, it shows we have about 2,000 of those. However, the number is more around the realm of 300. And then all ballots, like I said, were, they are tabulated if we receive them. Cost of ballots and mailed postage. It's, like I said, $18 to mail a ballot. Every single application that we have that is ongoing, we now have permanent absentee voting. 2016, it was 11,000. 2024, we are now at 42,000. All of these things, we have to do in accordance with Virginia election law. I really would love it, and I know that you five would love it as well, or six, I guess, would love it as well, if some of these were funded by the state. However, that continues to not be the case. Dropbox locations. This has gone back and forth throughout each election, and we bring the drop boxes back for the presidential election. However, I think looking at these statistics and with the large success of the ballot drop boxes and the postage that we are required by law to now pay, I don't know that we will continue doing the drop boxes for the two additional locations for presidential elections for the 10 days prior. We went through, we only received 13 ballots back. In that entire time, that 10-day timeframe, it takes two representatives, one from each party, to go out and open the box in the morning. It takes two more that we have to pay for their time and mileage to go out in the evening to empty the box, to drive it back to our office, for us to do the chain of custody, and do everything that we have to do. When I calculated it out, it came out to $165.39 per ballot for those 13 ballots that we had to handle. That makes my taxpayer heart hurt. So I honestly, with the postage that we pay and the way that we make it available, our ballot drop box at the office, I don't know that we will continue that ballot drop box option for those two additional locations. Polling places on Election Day, we had 14 ballots dropped off throughout those 18 precincts. Logistics, we have, and like I said, for having to do the ballot on demand, we had 36 different ballot styles that we had to handle. Each precinct has a ballot style, and each party has a ballot style that is entitled to that, for those voters within each of the precincts. In November, we had 54 ballot styles, because we had additional reasonings for presidential only and our federal only ballots. Delivery, it takes two full days between our office and General Services. And huge shout out to General Services. Their guys are always amazing, and they step up and they get it done. And it has been streamlined so well over the years that we're doing it much faster in a much more economical way than what we've done in the past. So General Services, we could not do it without them. So a huge thank to them. And then also to the clerk of the court. She actually comes to our office on Election Night and sits and helps do the results and observes to make sure that she can say that everything was done correctly. And then finally, certifying the results. We, it used to be, we are declaring the winner on Election Night, and that's it. And now because we have to receive ballots three days after the election, which also, which oftentimes includes a holiday, extends it to the next week. I just want to prepare voters, and I want voters to continue to understand that it isn't, we're not sitting twiddling our thumbs waiting for results to happen. We have to wait for the deadlines to pass. And so because of all of these things, the certification that the electoral board does cannot happen until the week after the election for any election at this point. All data entry is manual, and it requires on Election Night for us to enter, myself and my new chief, we have to enter over 5,000 unique cells in a spreadsheet that we have to enter in order for it to go to the state for those results to be shown on public websites or anyplace else. And so that is why those times take so long, depending on how many offices there are for that are on the ballot. We also had the wonderful benefit of doing a risk-limiting audit, not once but twice. And it was like drinking through a fire hose. We did not know that we were going to be chosen until the day after the election, or a few days actually after. And the first one was the Senate race. We had to have all of the ballots transported and escorted back to our office. And we did it simultaneously. We lent part of our building to the city of Williamsburg. They did their audit, we did ours. And as you can see on the screen, those are all election officers that we scrambled to get. There were 40 election officers that we scrambled in less than 36 hours' notice for them to come in and do what they were supposed to do, help count the ballots. And we were exactly within our results. So I'm very proud with how that turned out, and that was just a fascinating thing. Because we got selected to hand count all of our central absentee precinct ballots, we had to hand count roughly 67% of the ballots cast for that office, because we had such a high turnout for our central absentee precinct. And I'm so proud that we don't have to do it for five more years. Voting again, begins again in 44 days. So we just finished one election and we're on to the next. So it's rinse and repeat. We will start May 2nd for the June 17 dual primary. We do not know if voters go to look at the candidate, or anybody goes to look at current candidates on the department's website. The only current candidates that are up to date are the ones that I have entered myself here within James City County, and I have put the party designations. If you go and look at any of the state competitions, those are all still showing as independent, whether they are Republican, Democratic, Independent, Purple Party, whatever it is. Everybody's showing Independent until the state board can get themselves scheduled and completed to enter that information. But the next November election is the second highest turnout. That's the gubernatorial election. We'll also have lieutenant governor, attorney general, House of Delegates for the 69th and the 71st districts. And we also have local offices here for Palatine and Jamestown. And you guys may know of that. We also have school board for Palatine and Jamestown. So it promises to be another adventurous year for us. New voting equipment, that is on the horizon. I will be requesting it. I will be completing a CIP request for that within the next few, I would say, within the next month, I guess. And I am requesting that that would be, that new equipment be put into place on or before November 27. That will give us a few elections under our belt before the presidential election. So we can say these machines have been proven, they have been tested, everything else. So we will keep our ADA equipment. It would only be the voting equipment with the voting tabulators that has a lot more restrictions and a lot more safeguards in place on the new equipment. Questions?
Questions?
I had a question. Thank you for your thorough report. I was wondering about early voting hours. Is that up to you, or is that set by the state, or how does that work?
That is a local decision for early voting hours. We are, we do, actually, we do more than what we're supposed to. You're supposed to do eight hours in a day, and we do nine hours in the day. And then we do the two Saturdays prior to the election. There are some localities that have done Sundays to be open, and those localities have, they continue to say that there's just not the benefit for it. And also giving staff time to have a little bit of a breather between, because I've got to have staff there at all times.
Yeah, so I guess that was kind of, the one thing that I observed was that I've just, in this community, like nine to 11 wasn't busy, what I would call not busy, you know? So, but if you say you change that to 10 to 7, are you having to pay staff for after 5 o'clock additional money? Or are you just paying a straight eight-hour day? How does that work?
That would have to be vetted and talked to, I'd have to talk to the electoral board about it. The staff, we would end up having to stagger it, but because we have so many other moving parts that are simultaneously happening to the early voting, it would be additional, it would be a time and a half of comp time. We don't pay overtime, so it would be the comp time of the staff and then also the additional time of the election officers.
Okay.
So.
And then another question I had was, maybe if you could go back to the slide about the number of voters, because we have such, so one question that I've, that I've wondered is that maybe it was Election Day vote, that where you broke it down about number of early, anyway, I'll just ask a question. We have so many early voters. Are you, what do you do moving forward if that continues to grow? Because you've got these precincts open, now we have to close schools, safety. Are you seeing a little bit more of a lull on actual Election Day? That you would, have you, you know, would, these are questions that have come to me about, would we consider combining? combining precincts, for example, instead of spreading it out so much if we're seeing, because we have so many early voters? And is it more quiet on actual Election Day than it, than it used to be?
That is an excellent, an excellent question. We actually did combine a couple of precincts, or we combined one in the Roberts District, and the problem that we run into is the, the size of the building, the availability of public places, and we actually had about a 50-50 turnout for early voting versus Election Day, and we are highly volatile. It depends on what the news is saying, and if somebody gets something in their head one day and says, hey, I want to turn out for this, oh no, early voting is not safe, you need to go to the polls on Election Day. That just completely shifted it on end, and we could go from what our, what our standard 50-50 turnout is to a 30%, 70% turnout, and then suddenly we are suffocating at the polls on Election Day. I have, in my ideal world, I would make us mega precincts, and we would do five, one in each district, and then that way the voters could go to any of the five districts or five precincts, show up, they wouldn't get pinged for going to the wrong polling place on Election Day, but that would take General Assembly. The other thing is, is that there is a little bit of a hidden code, we have a lot of sections of code that are very antiquated, and one of those says that if you have people, if you have 4,000 people that vote for an election during a presidential year, then you must split the precinct. The only way that we got around that for three of our precincts is because I continued to dig further, worked with the Attorney General's Office, and found that we can remove those voters that voted early from that 4,000 statistics, so that prevented us from having to split ours. We are really at the max for all of our 18 precincts. We have some here and there that are about 1,800 voters, like in Berkeley D at the fire station, but that is, that's, that's an anomaly, it's not, it's not the standard practice. So we, when we did the redistricting, we kept it between 3,000 and 4,000 voters, and with that, I still think that it would behoove us, or I think we're still going to have to split in 2028. But we may edge out, depending on what we get locked in for the census in 2030, when we have to do all this fun again.
Hey, boy, speaking from experience, wouldn't one mega precinct in five, that would be fantastic.
Well, it just, it makes sense. It would reduce the amount of election officers that we have to have. The staffing, it would reduce the amount of tax that we would have to use on General Services, the Police Department, there are so many things. It would be a very responsible bill to put in, to have that, and I think it would be a huge hit for voters, but I am not in the legislature.
Thank you.
First of all, I think it's terrific that we're seeing these kinds of numbers, and one of the positive aspects of early voting and absentee voting by mail and Election Day voting and so forth is simply the fact that we are seeing more engagement by our citizens, and that's true, of course, across the country, we've seen a high, exceptionally high levels of participation in the last few elections, partly because the rules have changed. I was curious about the, the number of provisional ballots you noted in 2024 in November, and I wondered, does that reflect people who requested provisional voting rights, or who actually cast ballots, and were there some that were not?
These represent the numbers that were actually counted and not how many were submitted.
So how many were submitted, would you say?
I would say we probably, in November of 2020, that was when the rules were different. I would say, I honestly, I, I can't say confidently, but I would say it was probably twice that. When, when it went to same-day registration, the rules for provisionals completely shifted on end, and we count, we used to count much less than what was submitted, so the, the results was different than the actual turnout. And now that has completely shifted, and the turnout is actually pretty close to that 860, we didn't deny many of them.
Right, so essentially, what we're seeing is that with this opportunity for Election Day registration, if you meet the requirements for registration under a normal calendar, then you have that opportunity to cast a ballot, and virtually everybody who did that was somebody who was qualified to vote in the county?
Yes, sir, that is correct. The only ones that we denied for this election were the ones that, had we had super precincts, they could have just, it would have been counted, but they went to Stonehouse A instead of Stonehouse B kind of thing. And so they weren't eligible because they went to the wrong precinct to cast their provisional ballot, things along those lines.
So you have to actually be in the precinct?
Only on Election Day.
Well, right, I understand that, but isn't that when almost all the provisional ballots are cast?
No, the, a good portion of them are on early voting as well.
Really?
Because it's same-day registration. We close the books the 21 days in advance, and that 21 days is when people come in, do same-day registration, and then vote at that time.
At the vote center itself?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Elections are not the same as what they used to be.
Other questions? Some of that's good.
Yes.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next up is FY 2026 to 2030 CIP project discussions, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I thought I'd just give you a short discussion on the CIP, sort of where we came and where we are. The proposed budget does come out this Friday, so March 28, so it'll be available, and so I do have what is going to be proposed. I asked Renee to move the slides for us, just a quick recap, you've seen these numbers before, our five-year program for CIP, it's FY 26 through FY 2030. The budget you would adopt in May would only approve funding for the FY 26 year, but we have a plan for the projects that are in the five-year program. We did have a request for over $440 million in capital requests, and then 125 in capital maintenance requests, and on the capital project request side, the proposed budget will include $345 million in requests, or being of these requests, we have about $100 million that we did not include, and I'll cover those in a little more detail in a few minutes. Next slide, please. So again, I've given you this before, where you show the requests sort of by department or area, and then we had a first draft, and I'm going to move on to the next slide since you've seen this one. I kept the first draft that was there, and what is in the proposed is similar. We did make some adjustments to the first draft based on funding and using some of the criteria that we had gotten from you and others during your board retreat, and I'll cover those in a little more detail, but of this total proposed projects now is 343, and we upped that to 345 million, so that is the projects that are there. You can see our plan of what we had thought about years prior were significantly less, and a lot of that's related to the Government Center and the General Services Building, and then our library in terms of moving all those forward. So, next slide, please.
I'm sorry, can you, can you go back to that one, just real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Just let me. Okay, thank you.
So the next slide, you have seen these before. The only difference, and I know at least one board member has the sheet that I gave out a month ago, probably maybe all of you have that hidden somewhere, again, it was meant to be your rankings here on the list during the retreat, our department head or executive leadership team members ranking these same projects in the middle, separate from the board, and then the large staff meeting where we had 80 or 90 staff members allowing them to hear a similar presentation of ranks. I was just trying to give you an idea of where these different groups saw value, and they didn't have enough dots to put them on every project, and so that sort of made each group choose where they wanted to go. So the difference in this sheet, and I've given you this as a handout, is just beside the Consolidated Government Center or the title of it, there is a yes, there's a no, and there's a partial, meaning yes, it's in the proposed, no, it's not in the proposed, or a partial amount of what was requested is in the proposed, and I'm happy to go through those in a little more detail, but I just thought this might be a better way for you to see it, that the Consolidated Government Center, and then the addition, which today is an additional library branch, is included in the proposed CIP. The Grove Community Park and the War Hill Sports Skate Park is included in the proposed CIP. The James City County Marina, the Upper County Park Splash Pad, the Green Springs Interpretive Trail, restrooms, the Veterans Park Improvements, Chickahominy Riverfront Park Paddle Craft Area, and the Riverfront, Chickahominy Riverfront Park Multi-Use Trail, and the Chickahominy Riverfront Park Restrooms and Concession Buildings, while all projects that I believe we need in the community, there wasn't funding to do them, and they're not included in the proposed CIP. So if there are any of those that you feel strongly about, that would be part of our discussion process with you in the April timeframe to refund those or put those in, and in most cases, it would mean displacing something else. So we would need to pull something out to put something in or borrow more money, and the borrowing, I think our FMS director would try to discourage our borrowing of any more funds for these projects, but that could be done. We do have a partial funding for the War Hill Sports Complex, and it's most of what was requested, it was 2.7 million of $16 million was taken out, so that does let that project move forward. I don't think it changes it significantly, but we can talk through that, I think that was a balancing, trying to get the projects back, so we had a significant part of that of being able to build the baseball softball complex there. The Upper County Park Multi-Use Trails were not funded, the War Hill Sports Complex Connector Road, really turning our service road into a VDOT standard road, not that it might ever move to VDOT, but at least make it a safer, more durable road that's able to withstand the traffic moving through that. We did have a separate project that really built a new road into the woods around the park, it was more in the $5 or $6 million range, this was the staff's, I guess, response of trying to reduce costs on a project that would still serve that park and let us move traffic, but it wouldn't be a separate road, and we can talk about the pros and cons of that as we do the budget process as well. Jamestown Beach Event Park Improvements were not recommended, the Brickyard Landing Improvements, there was a lot of support from that, from the board, from our ELT and our staff. We did fund primarily parking improvements, boat storage, and some of that, there are other improvements out there with walking trails and restrooms that our staff would like to do, they were not included, but it does include, at least they start for Brickyard, and I believe those were in the 2029 or 2030 timeframe, so they are further out, and as this moves forward each year, we may be able to incorporate more of those requests if funding is better or costs are better going forward. The War Hill Sports Complex Multi-Field Expansion was not included in the five-year CIP, next slide, please, and then moving to the next sheet, same, General Service Administration Building, we included funding for that, the stormwater infrastructure was fully funded, the warehouse requested by General Services and pretty strong support from the staff and the board was not funded, it was a $9.5 million expense that we just had to move for something else. The courthouse engineering services, again, that is sort of late in the CIP, I mean, the 2030 timeframe, that will show back up, I believe, because they need additional space at the courthouse, but it is not recommended in our current five-year CIP. Fire Station 3 replacement, it says partial, or says yes with an asterisk, really, we kept it at current, whatever the current estimate was, and I think it's right at 15.5, so $15,500,000. We will evaluate that as we go through the design, but it is in there to be funded. And then Fire Station 6, while partial, the design is funded, Chief Fash had mentioned having the equipment in the design at the same year, I removed the equipment, we've talked about some other equipment we have that we could potentially put back in service, but I didn't want to delay getting this into the CIP and the design criteria, or get the design side of it, so it is recommended for funding in the five-year CIP as the design side. The police firing range expansion was included, the police covered vehicle parking was not, and the police classroom and shoot house out of the range for $4 million was not, not that it's not needed, not that it's not a good project, it's just $4 million we didn't believe we had at this point. Clearbird Baker bus canopies were recommended, the pre-case space was recommended, the centralized storage facility was not recommended, I believe the school division needs that, but again, it's almost $2 million, and the funding just wasn't there to support all of that. Jamestown High School expansion was included, and again, the library and community theater, this was a sort of a duplicative request, so I don't want the community to think we're not supporting the library, it is built into our Government Center addition at this point, so it was not recommended here, and then a small sub-branch in Grove was not recommended for the current timeframe, not that it wouldn't be needed and the services could be provided, it's just, again, a funding issue. Community development, the transportation match was included, it does step up each year for the next five years, our open space match was included, and then the transit stop improvements had a tremendous amount of support, and it was included as well. So that's at least a summary of where we are with the CIP. Again, the budget will be released this Friday, March 28. There is a budget community meeting that Ms. McCarthy and I are hosting along with JCSA, April 1st at 6 o'clock here in the boardroom, so it will be broadcast, and certainly those that are in attendance or could watch otherwise. You've got a public hearing on the budget, April 8, that's your meeting that begins at 5 o'clock, so after 5 o'clock, you would have a public hearing on the budget. Expect April 22 at your business meeting, we will talk more in depth, and then see if you need or desire additional meetings beyond that, with the hopes of having you adopt the budget, May 13. So more to come on that, but that's at least a short summary of our proposed CIP and sort of the process of how we got to what is being recommended. Any questions or things I could clarify for you?
I'd suggest.
That's why I gave you the handout with the dots and the yeses and nos and partial, and we'll have more conversation about that anytime between now and May 13, if you're convenient. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if I can make, bring this up now, but I read that the Marina is for sale, and the other day was the last day for bids, did we get any bids on that?
We, what we have been, we've been out for an RFP, so the short answer is, we have put it out to see if there is an interested purchaser, and I, our intent was to, we had another $16 million in improvements, but we've spent close to $4 million, you've got a leasing there today, we had tried to sell the Marina 10 or 15 years ago and didn't really get a viable offer, and so we may not get a viable offer this time, but we've gone through an RFP to get a realtors that specialize in Marina sales, and we have at least a few that are interested, so we will put it out to see if there is an interested party. Recognizing that it has become a real community space, and access to the water is really a big deal in our community, I think any sale that we would come back to you with and recommend, and we may not get an offer that we would recommend, but we would bring back any offer to you, if we had one that said, hey, we think this is a good offer, and maybe we should consider selling it, we would want to include some language that protects that access to the water and that community space as much as possible, and you own that property, so you can have restrictions on the sale, and the purchaser would have to honor those or not purchase it. So I think you still have some ability, if people are worried about access to the water, to the boat ramp and those kinds of things, I think we can protect that, but those are the conversations we would have with you if we get what we think is a reasonable offer for the Marina, and if you don't get that offer, then I think you'll see us come back with improvements that are being deferred at this point to continue making improvements at the Marina.
So that's my question too, so we're deferring the improvements until maybe we get a buyer or we don't get a buyer?
That was at least my recommendation, to hold off until we get to the point of knowing is there a viable offer, and there may or may not be, and then move forward one way or the other with selling and some improvements that way, or with us reinvesting more into the Marina.
That makes sense, okay, thank you.
I've seen that the concern seems to be to, could somebody come in and raise what's there and put up a housing development, and that, that's been a little bit of the buzz that people have been concerned about as well at the Marina, and its possible sale.
The board in the past was not interested in housing there, I would think that would be, as we talk about selling it, certainly it couldn't happen without board action, and my sense is, that would not be something we would be open to considering, or you would be open to considering in terms of a sale, but we'd want to sell it, in my mind, to maintain the water access, the openness, there may be more parking, some stormwater improvements, maybe a restaurant in that area, but in terms of housing or that type of development, that is not something we have envisioned from a staff side at all, really based on your guidance years ago.
So when do you want us to bring back feedback, questions at our next meeting? Talk about this, is there?
I think at any time the board would want to talk about it, either with me individually or as a group, we could do that, the group would be a public meeting, of course, that next meeting we have scheduled with you is April 22. So April 22, we would have that unless you want to meet sooner, and we could meet sooner. But individually, I'm happy to talk with any of you, so we could sort of know where you are and get our thoughts around what you might want to swap out, but in terms of the board meeting as a group, April 22 is it, unless you, following your April 8 meeting, you may want to meet ahead of April 22, and that is certainly your purview of what you'd like to do.
I would refer to my colleagues, if there is a, after the budget's introduced, and we've talked, we've looked at it and talked about it, and there's any interest in discussing some of these things further before we get to April 22, I think the early April meeting would be an appropriate time to bring up some of the things, but we'll, we'll see what, what kind of feedback I get from, from you guys, and we'll adapt accordingly.
And with the proposed budget coming out, I will tell you, the general fund budget, which is where people are paying taxes into and what really affects our residents, it's a 2.9% increase being proposed, so it's not a huge increase, but it is an increase, and that's really just growth primarily of some of our taxes, it's not raising rates or changing fees, but it is a 2.9% increase over FY 2025, and it's really $7.3 million in new money for the county, so when you allocate that, it doesn't go very far, but I think it's a budget that is pretty tight and represents the times we're in and the pressures people are feeling in the community as well, but that will be out this Friday, March 28.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the Government Center update with Brad Rehimer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, my pleasure to be here today to give you my monthly update on the, on the new Government Center. You'll see, there's also a couple items down on the agenda, the change order that I know we've talked about. The change order that I know we've talked about, and I'll talk a little bit more about it there, but that's strictly in regards to the programming and schematic design for the library at that location. You know, we did have a bit of a lull in activity between the end of the first interim agreement and now that we've begun the second interim agreement. So it hasn't been too crazy hectic with stuff going on at the Government Center, but it has certainly ramped up here in the last few weeks. We did have kickoff meetings for both the second interim agreement and for the new library. Also in the process right now of scheduling meetings with our employees. You know, I'd put something out to department heads and got input in employee names and those who are interested and wanted to volunteer to participate in a number of different employee groups for the building. Those groups are the outdoor space, you know, group of employees to look at the outdoor space and how we can best utilize that. We have a workstation slash phone booth group, which, phone booth, not a traditional phone booth. But you know, we're going to that open workstation concept in a lot of the areas, realizing that there may be times where employees absolutely need privacy to make really super confidential calls or do whatever. They call them in phone booths or just really small office spaces that would accommodate that. We have a front counter, common space, conference room group, and then a cafe, coffee break room, specialty room group. So you'll be hearing that probably from employees. We have probably 40, 45 different employees and we parts of those different groups just to be able to provide input on what they want to see in that building. So we're excited to be doing that. We have done a lot of work and Paul Holt is here, and thank you, Paul. A lot of work on site plan changes, nothing major. But you will see when I get the finished, pretty site plan picture. We have a lot of scribbles on the one we currently have, just some minor changes, nothing huge. The building shifts just a little bit up. One of the roundabouts on Ashbury has been removed. Just a little bit of change with the entrances to the rec center and to the Government Center. But nothing huge, but you'll see that very shortly. Still working hard on getting the recommendations from VDOT, reference to the newest traffic study to see if that may facilitate some other changes. But we're hopeful we have it down pretty good right now, but we'll be working on that here in the next few weeks. And that's all I have right now for an update, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'll hold. It's remarkably quiet down there.
Yeah. I was hoping before I left the board, we would have a Government Center, but doesn't look like we'll make it.
You gotta be here to break ground.
That's only 12 years. We get another 12.
Governments sometimes move slow.
Very slow.
All right. That's, any further questions? Thank you. Okay, we move on to board considerations. Our first one is appeal of notice of violation erosion and stormwater management ordinance at 110 River Bluffs. Mr. Michael Wilson will give the staff presentation.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Mr. Stevens, I'm Mike Wilson, Section Chief, Stormwater Resource Protection, here to present the appeal of a notice of violation administered by staff at 110 Rivers Bluff for violations to the erosion and stormwater management ordinance. So Mr. Michael Ware, Esquire, has filed an appeal to the James City County Board of Supervisors on December 2024 on behalf of Mr. James Dodd, trustee, and Ms. Christina Dodd, trustee. The owner is appealing to notice of violation issued by staff for a violation of Chapter 8, the Erosion Stormwater Management Ordinance, for violations that occurred on property at 110 Rivers Bluffs in the Kingsmill subdivision. Pursuant to James City County Code, Section 816, the Board of Supervisors shall hear that appeal for administrative decisions. In reviewing the agent's actions, the Board of Supervisors shall consider the evidence and opinions presented by the aggrieved appellant and the county agent. After considering this evidence and the opinions, the Board of Supervisors may affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the county agent. Board of Supervisors' decisions shall be final, subject only to review by the Circuit Court of James City County. Brief background on the issue at hand. Stormwater compliance for development is dependent upon two types of best management practices, structural BMPs and non-structural. Natural open space is a non-structural BMP for stormwater compliance. The Kingsmill subdivision relies upon both types of BMPs to achieve overall compliance with stormwater regulations. The regulations also require the long-term maintenance of permanent stormwater facilities. For structural BMPs, this is achieved through the recordation of a declaration of covenants and inspection maintenance agreement to ensure that the structural BMPs are maintained and continue to function over the life of the BMP. For non-structural BMPs, this is achieved through the recordation of a deed of natural open spacey to ensure that the environmental characteristics of that open space continue to serve their stormwater functions and erosion prevention functions. This property was subject to a natural open space easement dedicated to James City County by Bush Properties for the express purpose to, quote, "preserve land as natural open space" as part of grantor's efforts to improve the quality of stormwater runoff from the property. The deed of easement was recorded March 15, 2001, as instrument number 010004471 by the clerk's office in the Circuit Court of the City of Williamsburg and the County of James City. The deed to natural open space easement is part of the approved non-structural BMP required for compliance for long-term maintenance requirements of James City County's ordinance. The deed of easement restricts uses of the property. Specifically, the DODs violated term number four of the easement, which states that the easement property shall remain in its natural condition with respect to natural leaf litter or other ground covering vegetation, understore vegetation or shrub layer, and tree canopy. The activities of the grantor within the easement property shall be limited to those which do not remove or damage any vegetation or disturb the soil. The grantor may remove dead, diseased, poisonous, or invasive vegetation with the express written consent of the county engineer. Such written permission was never sought nor was permission granted. In November 2003, I'm sorry, 2023, staff did receive notification from a concerned citizen about a potential resource protection or RPA violation currently underway at 100 River Bluffs in the Kingsmill subdivision. Staff conducted a site visit that afternoon and discovered that the hillside between 100 River Bluffs and the James River had extensive tree work completed with many trees either completely cut down or with the tops removed. The affected property is 110 River Bluffs and is owned by the Kingsmill Community Services Association, otherwise known as KCSA. On December 7, 2023, staff sent a notice of violation to Mr. James Dodd and Ms. Christina Dodd, property owner of 100 River Bluffs, outlining the violations and the processes. After several site visits and discussions with the property owner, the county determined that the stormwater violation that had occurred, had occurred exclusively on 110 Rivers Bluffs and the charges on 100 River Bluffs were dropped. The county issued a new notice of violation to the appellant on November 21, 2024 for the violation that had occurred at 110 River Bluffs. The DODs have appealed that notice of violation. Staffs reviewed their appeal and associated documents and offers the following information for this board's consideration. Mr. James Dodd, trustee, and Ms. Christina Dodd, trustee, were the owners of 100 Rivers Bluffs at the time that 110 Rivers Bluff stormwater management violation occurred. That Bobcat Tree Service was the contractor that performed the tree clearing work on 110 Rivers Bluffs. That no request for work in the natural open space easement on 110 Rivers Bluffs was submitted nor approved by either the DODs or KCSA. Mr. James Dodd, trustee, and Ms. Christina Dodd, trustee, sold the property, 100 Rivers Bluffs, on November 21, 2024, and that Mr. James Dodd, trustee, and Ms. Christina Dodd, trustee, were cited with a violation of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, and they have resolved that matter for the maximum fine of $10,000, which the board approved earlier today on consent calendar. So the issue to be decided by the Board of Supervisors is whether Mr. James Dodd, trustee, and Ms. Christina Dodd, trustee, violated James City County Code, Chapter 8, Section 814, long-term maintenance of permanent stormwater facilities for failing to adhere to the conditions of the recorded deed of easement for natural open space easement instrument number 010004471, when they cut down trees and cut off the tops of trees on the property. Renee, could I have the presentation, please? And I'll briefly go through a presentation for you. So again, before you today is an appeal of the natural open space and Virginia Stormwater Management Program violations at 110 Rivers Bluffs, appealed by Mr. James Dodd, trustee, and Ms. Christina Dodd, trustee. Their request was that they did not remove vegetation from the RPA. That has been resolved. They had also appealed a $10,000 RPA or CBPA violation that has been resolved. What's still yet to be resolved is the natural open space easement violation, where they did remove vegetation by cutting down trees and cutting the tops of trees out. And we are requesting a $32,500 stormwater management violation, the maximum allowable by ordinance for that violation. Some excerpts from the natural open space easement. It was recorded in February 2001, Four Rivers Bluffs at Kingsmill, plat book 80, page 26 and 27. And where they requested to preserve the land as natural open space as part of their efforts to improve the stormwater quality from the property. Condition number four, the easement property shall remain in its natural condition, including ground cover, understory, and tree canopy. However, the grantor may install walking trails or remove dead, dying, diseased vegetation with the express written consent of the county engineer. Condition number six says that in the event of a violation of the easement, the grantee shall have the right to seek all appropriate legal and equitable relief. Although this easement does provide general benefits to the public, nothing in this easement conveys a right of the public to use the property. Ordinance requirements, Chapter 8, Section 8-14, the long-term maintenance of stormwater, permanent stormwater facilities. County shall require some kind of technique to manage the quality, long-term quality and quantity of stormwater runoff that open space easements are utilized and recognized by the state to manage both quantity and quality of stormwater runoff. And that where an open space easement is used, that the vegetative functions, vegetation functions as a BMP and as such disturbance of that BMP is a violation of easement's terms and of the county's stormwater regulations. Additional excerpts from Chapter 8, Section 8-16 hearings. Any person subject to the requirements that is article may demand in writing a formal hearing by the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Michael Ware did request that in December of 2024. Section 817 appeals that the Board of Supervisors is the correct body to hear the appeal, and their decision shall be final, subject only to appeal to the Circuit Court of James City County. In Section 8-19, the enforcement of the ordinance. Any person who willingly, willfully, or negligently violates any provision of this article shall be guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by confinement in jail of not more than 12 months or not more than $32,500 or both. And just to reiterate, we are only asking for a fine. Location map. This property is 100 Rivers Bluffs, formerly owned by Mr. James Dodd, trustee, and Ms. Christina Dodd, trustee. This property, also known as 110 Rivers Bluff, is owned by the Kingsmill Community Services Association, or KCSA. And the NOS, or natural open space violation, has occurred here in this highlighted rectangle in purple. From the county's website, the 2019 aerial view. This is 100 Rivers Bluffs, and you can see the vegetated state of 110 Rivers Bluffs in the background between this property outlined in red and the James River. From our site visit, November 3, 2023, these couple trees have been limbed up that was on 100 Rivers Bluffs and was deemed ultimately to be allowed. There is a distinct lack of canopy in this corridor, similar to what would be here on the right and/or left. And then this photo here is a little closer up view. Also is touchy. From the edge of the bluff, we see tree stumps and bare dirt. We see formerly 50 to 60 foot tall trees cut in half. We see these trees over here have been cut in half and then further off into the distance, the adjacent property, what the canopy should have or formerly looked like, looking to the west. Looking to the east, again, what the canopy currently looks like, and then several tree stumps, bare dirt, and trees cut in half. We know from this photo who the contractor was. Couple more photos, a direct shot looking east from the top of the bluff. What the canopy used to look like, looking east and looking west. And then, again, I just want to reiterate the issue before this board is whether the DODs violated James City County Code, Chapter 8, specifically Section 8-14, the long-term maintenance of permanent stormwater facilities, for violating and failing to adhere to the conditions of the deed of easement for natural open space instrument number 010004471, when they cut down the trees and cut off the tops of trees on the property. Be happy to answer any questions the board may have on this matter.
Questions from the board from Mr. Wilson?
So were the DODs unaware, or do you, this might be more for their counsel, were they unaware that that property belonged to KCSA? Or do you know the answer to that question?
I will defer that to their counsel.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is John Dooley. I'm here on behalf of Michael Ware. I'm an attorney in his office as well. I am here on behalf of the DODs, which are the homeowners in question in this, in this violation. I appreciate the board's time this afternoon. And I appreciate Mr. Wilson's thorough presentation as well. And appreciate Mr. Wilson's thorough presentation as well. The, the section that's, that's in question that my client has been issued a violation and ordinance of, also, also contains a definitions section, which I think that the board needs to consider, which is that, and peppered throughout this definitions section, which starts at Section Eight, Dash, Twenty-One, is the, the term land disturbing activity, which is the, the goal of this groundwater maintenance program. And so land disturbance or land disturbing activity as defined in that section is a man-made change to the land that potentially changes its runoff characteristics, including any clearing, grading, excavation, transporting or fill or filling of land, except that the term shall not include those exemptions in Section Eight, Dash, Two, Two, subsection C. So I, I would, I would first admit to, to the board that no evidence was presented that my clients indeed actually did clear, grade, excavate or transport or fill or any of the land or affect the runoff in any, in any way. There was no evidence presented to this board as to the impacts of any of the, any of the characteristics that were, that were changed in those trees. I will say this too, that to, our, my only amendment to what was shared by Mr. Wilson was that the, all the cuts that, that were seen to the trees, they did not remove the tops of the canopies. They removed some branches. They had branches removed by the, the contractor that was, that was seen in the, in the picture. As to the, as to the, and there was, there was, I believe, a one, one diseased stump, dead diseased stump that was, that was removed. But all the other actions that were seen, especially with regard to the trees that, that were cut off or referenced to be cut off in half. I, I can't, I, I can't stipulate to or even proffer on behalf of my client what the prior height of those trees was, but I don't think that's necessarily a relevant factor in, in this. But they were, those, those that you saw where the canopy was completely removed was done by the prior owner of this property without, and it was not done by, by the DODs. They came to this property with that. As, as stated, they, they agreed to resolve and have, have now resolved the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance with the, and paid the fine of $10,000, which we believe was, which they believe was appropriate. And they've taken responsibility for their, their actions with regard to that. But as to the application of a water preservation ordinance or stormwater management ordinance, it doesn't, their position is that it's not an appropriate application of this, of this particular ordinance, which again, the goal is to avoid land disturbance. It's all through that, that ordinance section. And land disturbance of the nature that changes the runoff of the land. When the rain comes down, I'm not an expert, but an expert was not brought in either to testify changes of, of the, of the land with regard to drainage. But when the, when the rain comes down, whether it, whether it hits the branches on the way down or not, when it gets to the ground, that's, that's when it really becomes an issue of the, of drainage. And so as stated, the ground cover is important. Not excavating is important, not clearing. There wasn't clearing done. There was pruning, but not clearing. There was no excavation done. So there, it doesn't fit within what was contemplated by this ordinance. And I believe the application of this ordinance would be inappropriate and unduly harsh to my clients who have, who have, as I've said, have taken responsibility for what they do believe was, were their actions. And, and Ms. Ms. Larson, and to preemptively answer your, your question that was presented to Mr. Wilson, no, they did not have knowledge or awareness of these, of these restrictions. They certainly do now. But as to the, as to those restrictions, they, they certainly, I, I will proffer for them. And, and Ms. Dodd is here today. She can testify to you as well if you'd prefer. That she would not have taken those actions, nor would her husband have taken these actions had, had they known. But they didn't and they have, they have resolved it, I believe, satisfactorily to the, to the law with the Chesapeake Bay ordinance, ordinance resolution adopted by this. Happy to try to feel any questions that you might have about this.
Questions for the board?
I've got a couple. So the, the treetops that they were cleared or cut by someone else?
Correct. When you, when the photos that you saw, the, the tops of the trees where, where they were completely shared off and there was no canopy there, that was action that, that had been taken prior to, to the DODs' ownership of that, that property. It wasn't the, the tree, you, you also saw in those pictures some branches that had been, that had been severed. Those, those branches were the ones that, or the absence thereof, the spots that you saw there, that was the subject of what was happening under their stewardship of that property.
So they limbed up some trees, left the canopy, but the trees lower down that, that the tops were cut off. You're saying they didn't do that?
Correct.
Or have that contracted out?
Correct.
Now, do we know, did, did the, did the contractor do that thinking that, you know, why he was doing the other work? He, he decided to cut those out of there or was it done by a whole nother company or someone else? Do we, do we know?
I do not have direct knowledge of, of who took the actions to cut, to sever those, those other limbs or those other trees. I do have the, I have, I have closer pictures that I can show. And as I said, Ms. Dodd is here to, to offer some, some perspective on that. But as to, yes, there, I mean, closer up shots, and I apologize not being able to put it on the screen for you here. But you'll see that there, there are trees that, that where the limbs had been, had been, or the, the tops had been taken off completely. That wasn't, that wasn't the action that they were taking. My understanding from my client is that the actions they took had to do with limbing up, as, as you said. And again, they, they sought to resolve that with, with the, with the Chesapeake Bay violation ordinance and paying the $10,000. But as to this, there was, there was no land disturbing activity that took, that took place, even, even under their stewardship.
I can, I can kind of understand, you know, not understanding land disturbance when you think, well, I didn't go in there with an excavator and pull the stumps out and that's one thing. But by cutting the tree down, it is a land disturbance, especially being on the water. And there is a, a form of land disturbance because it is by cutting trees down or cutting the tops out, it does disrupt that soil underneath it and allows the, the water, instead of hitting the canopy and slowing it down, it allows it to come down at a faster speed. So it does create erosion. And I think that's what staff's probably looking at as far as, you know, when, when you take a tree out, that canopy that's, that's slowing that water down and one of the components that, and understory growth. And, and when you take a tree down, of course, you're going to disturb the understory as well because you've got to do that in order to get the stump, or not the stump, but in order to get the log out of there and everything else and the pieces and components. So did, and, and the piece of land we're talking about is not owned by them? Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing, understanding? That, that the section of land is not actually their land? That some of the actual work was being performed on?
Again, I'd have to defer to the city's representative on, on his characterization of that, that land in front of the 110 River Bluff. But the, but to your, your comments and on, on the land disturbance, again, I think we have to rely on the definition as stated in the ordinance as to, if we're going to apply the ordinance, we have to stick to the definition, which is talking about specifically excavation, clearing, removal. That, that, that didn't, that doesn't, that doesn't encompass pruning.
But what is clearing? From, from your perspective?
My perspective, clearing would actually be clearing the land for the purpose of man-made development. So removal of the tree altogether.
Removal of trees altogether. Looked like, looked like there was a lot of evidence of trees being removed from that parcel, no?
I, I don't, I don't think so, sir. Respectfully, I think those, those pictures did not show removal of the trees. They showed removal of branches. There is, so I.
I thought we saw some tree stumps that, that were exposing a lot of, a lot of granite, ground. Is that?
Again, I would, I would say on that, that my, my clients had, had branches removed, not, not trees. But even so, with the stumps being placed, there's, that's not, that's not clearing for the purpose of, of man-made excavation or, or change. It's, the, the roots still remain there.
We might, we might disagree on what constitutes clearing then, but, but to me, and I think I was around when this ordinance was adopted, that would constitute clearing from my perspective. Maybe I'm wrong about that.
And with, with all due respect, sir, I absolutely, I, I appreciate your experience and that, that, and your perspective on that. And certainly there is room for interpretation. But in reliance, when it comes to, to the legal interpretation of either an ordinance or a statute, the reliance has to be on, on what is defined as it, or, or so. So to that end, but in the notice that my clients received, there was no, there was no reference to a statute or a code section or, or an ordinance that would define.
Are you, are you suggesting that, that those removals of, of trees above the stump level were not the act of your client?
I believe that the, and, and again, I can, I can ask Ms. Dodd to come forward and, and share her, her perspective on that if I have mischaracterized or misstated, but I don't believe I have. My understanding of it is that those, those trees where you saw removal of the full canopy were, were, were not the actions taken by them. They were taken before they took possession of the property. Actions taken by the DODs was, was the limbing that you saw, the, the removal of limbs, but the remainder of the canopy there.
Now, clearing is, it sounds like we're splitting hairs, you know? If we, if cutting down a tree is not clearing, if we cut down a hundred acres of trees, would that be clearing?
Well, sir, again, when, when, I think we have to look to the purpose of the, of the ordinance here, which is, the, the purpose of the ordinance is to prevent runoff.
Right.
And so if the roots remain, I'm, I'm not, I'm not an expert on that, but an expert hasn't been brought by the city to substantiate the charge against my clients that it has affected the drainage, that, that clearing of the, of that sorter, of that magnitude would change drainage. I'm not qualified to, to, to say that.
But if, if that, if that tree's cut down and we're saying that it's not creating any runoff, eventually that tree rots and there's a hole and that one day will be runoff. It may, if you're saying that's not runoff today, eventually that tree's going to rot and where that tree used to stand is going to be a hole, which will fill up and go down the bank and cause runoff.
From my perspective, sir, that, that requires too much speculation. Feeling with the current actions of, of my clients, which have to do with the limbing of these trees.
Does, does, does your client have a, have a contract with that, with that tree company that would demonstrate that they were only doing limbing?
I do not have any evidence in my, in my file to present today as to that question, sir, no. I mean, I, again, if this were, if it, if it comes down to, I think, a matter of, of placing this before the Circuit Court, certainly we would have to subpoena them as witnesses to, to speak to that.
Like, I, I guess what I'm confused about is, is why you would come to a hearing that is contesting a, a decision without providing such evidence, unless you're simply assuming that you want to sort of hopscotch over us right to the Circuit Court.
No, not at all, sir. I actually was, was hoping to have resolution from my client today. And in reliance on, on the ordinance and, and not, not inconveniencing either the witnesses or, or taking more of this board's time than is necessary. I think that, that the ordinance speaks for itself with regard to its purpose, that the, and that the burden of proof has not been met by the city regarding.
Well, it's the county, for, for.
Sure. Thank you for that correction.
You've not, you've, I mean, your, your argument on that item, as far as the ordinance, you've still not convinced me that what you're saying as far as clearing is not clearing. It's, you know, and so the, the next, the next time someone cuts down two or three trees, that's not clearing either. So where does it, you know, and it talks about, you know, cutting down trees and, and damage that it causes and, and that's what I'm hanging. And, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out your defense or argument on the, the clearing.
And as, as often happens when, in, in the interpretation of, of law and ordinance, it may not have been, it may not have been complicated, contemplated what exactly clearing means and needs to be more, more clear in the ordinance, which is that, that I, I don't have an opinion on one way or the other, except to say that I, again, what I'm here to represent are the DODs' actions, which I do not think have met the description of land disturbing activity under the ordinance as written. And again, land disturbing activity, meaning man-made changes to the land, such as excavation, clearing, et cetera. I know that you, you're trying to parse out what the definition would be of, of clearing. What I'm saying is I don't think that the, the removal of branches constitutes clearing. And, and you've asked about the, the tree stumps that, that were there. I think the question is whether those tree stumps were there as a result of my client's actions or the prior owner's actions. My client's proffered testimony to this, to this board today is that they removed branches, not trees, not stumps.
Now, the stump, so the stumps that are there, your client didn't have any to do with, they were there, those stumps were there when they bought the property?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And, and does the clearing company back you on that? I mean, most companies know that if they're by the water, regardless of where they are, there are some issues and they would say, hey, I've got to check with, you know, the local jurisdiction and see what we can and can't do. We can limb, you know, and I, I don't think there's an issue. And I know our staff is very good as far as you reaching out to them and saying, hey, I've got a tree that such and such, can I or can I not remove this? And if I do, what do I have to do to replace the tree? And, and usually if it's an issue as far as it could damage a house or damage something, or it was diseased or rotten, you know, they're really good as far as working with you on, on that, on those items. So the, so what I'm hearing from you today is the only thing your client did was limb up some trees. They didn't cut the top canopy. They didn't take down any trees. The stumps that are there were there when they bought the property.
Correct. That's, that is my understanding from my clients as well. Yes.
And is your client willing to tell us that is, when they bought that, that was originally there on the property?
I'm happy to have her come up if you, if you'd like for her to speak for herself on that issue.
I have a question. I do, I do have a question because in their deed, it says that it's an easement subject to all these ordinances and laws. And if you want to change anything on your property, I think your first phone call is to the county. Can we do this? Do we need an SUP? Do we need permission before we start taking down anything in a deeded easement? So then again, it's due diligence on their part.
And to that end, they were, they paid the fine for the, for the violation of the Chesapeake wetlands because, because they believed that that was, that was appropriate and, and a good application of that ordinance. But as to a land drainage issue, it's just that I, I don't think, think it's reached the level of, of impacting the drainage on this land, or at least there has not been sufficient evidence or proof from the city that that is indeed what has happened or will happen, even, even, even to speculate. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't asked of the city, what, what did you do to evaluate? Was there, is there even a projection of how this might impact it? Nothing. So the application of a drainage ordinance is, is, I think, excessive, off point. Possibly it's not contemplated within the definition of what was, what was being, trying to be prevented by that ordinance.
I think, I live in a development where a lot of land has been moved and everybody thinks that's just fine until it rains. And then they've got a flood in their backyard or the streets are flooded or whatever. Had somebody been out there and said, you have moved the land, you have disturbed the land. You know, that's why you've got what you've got. So anytime you go out and you say, well, okay, I'm going to remove, remove my tree, that's why you may need permission if it's on an easement, because you have changed the flow of water.
If you move land, I believe that that would be the case.
Or trees, trees and their roots, or even taking down big branches on trees.
That's not what is. That's not what is actually stated in the ordinance. And that's where the gears, I think, are grinding here a little bit, is that we're talking about, when the ordinance is talking about water runoff, it's saying, don't excavate the land, don't clear the land, which I think means, don't remove the trees, don't pull them uproot and all. And again, the actions of my client, we're not even close to that.
But it's saying also, don't remove leaves.
Well, the picture showed a clear area.
And you just said it perfectly, don't remove the tree, but you cut the tree down.
But that's exactly what we established didn't happen. I said, my client had limbed the trees, but had not removed the trees.
Well, you asserted that, you haven't proven that.
I was going to ask you, do you have the invoice between your client? I know that he, Supervisor McGlinnan asked for the contract. Do you have an invoice between your client and the tree company that states what they did? What work they did?
And on which property?
Yeah.
Bear with me just one moment, I will see if I do have that in here. No, I'm afraid I do not have a copy of the invoice between my client and the tree limbing service.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Do you, does anyone wish to have, has questions of Ms. Dodd? Please, yes. Ms. Dodd would. Ms. Dodd, if you could, give us the name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Christina Dodd, and I live at 260 William Spencer in Williamsburg.
Ms. Dodd, thank you for coming up and the question. Your attorney's saying that y'all just had the company come out and just limb trees up, and the county is seeing it as something different. Did y'all have any of those trees cut down and removed and leaving the stump there, not taking the stump off, but have the tree actually removed?
The only tree that I understand that was removed was the guy doing it called my husband, said, there's a dead tree here. And so we removed that one, but that was the only one. There's, there's a lot of stumps on the property already. I mean, you can, especially on the top, you can see that there's a lot of stumps that have been there a long time. But my understanding is that that was the only one that was actually removed.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Can we call Mike back up? Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to bring Mike back up, please. Mike, if you can. And bring up his presentation. I want to look at the picture of the, back of the, keep going back. Okay, right there.
Mike, question on the, on the stumps, on the, you know, trees and stumps. And did, what led you to believe that they were cut down? And I know you know the difference between a rotten stump and a freshly cut stump. What led you to believe that these stumps have been cut down since they've owned the property?
There were several considerations. One, the coloration of the stump itself was lighter in color as opposed to dark and rotten. Second, several of the tree species do stump sprout. And what I mean by that is they will grow, new growth, new branches will sprout from the stump itself. I saw no evidence of that. Certain species will not do that, like pines, but we're talking hardwoods in this particular instance, maples and oaks. I don't recall seeing any, any holly stumps. Hollies are notorious for stump sprouting. And then if that evidence was there, you'd be able to tell from the height of the sprout how long ago it had been cut. For instance, if those stump sprouts were three to four foot tall, I would say they'd been cut down three to four, five years ago. Again, I saw no evidence of stump sprouting.
Did you get a chance to talk, or your staff, anybody get a chance to talk with the individual that was doing the actual work on the site?
Tree company? Yes, sir. My recollection is that Ms. Robin Benedict, who is no longer employed at the county, did speak with the contractor. I don't recall exactly what that conversation was.
And I know on the 2019 aerial, we see a lot of trees and canopy and everything else.
Yes, sir. And I want to just make sure that the board is aware. In 2019, the Dodds did not own the property. The former owner, Mr. Thomas Niles, owned the property. It was sold in 2022. We do not have, or I didn't see a 2022 aerial such as this in the records. I may have overlooked it.
I think we do this, what, every four years, I believe, we do the aerials. So it may not have been another one done till 2023 or something.
Yes, sir.
This all began back in 2023 with a complaint by adjacent citizen?
Correct.
Okay. I guess that they, I guess the Dodds had bought the property in 2022. So between 19 and 22, there's a, if had a bunch of those trees been cut down, it's very likely we would have had some sort of a complaint from neighbors or somebody in the area, but we didn't.
We didn't. And we have fielded several complaints in this section of Kings Mill over the years, either Rivers Bluff, Rivers Edge, or Spencer's Grant.
Hearing about the bluffs quite frequently. So I guess my other, my other question is, the limit of their property runs down to where that little red line is toward the thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Approximately the top of the slope.
Top of the bluff. Just for my adification, the Chesbys Bay ordinance that we resolved earlier had to do with removal of vegetation in the, in the RPA. Was that RPA that was up on their piece of property?
Yes, sir. I'm going to direct your attention to your monitor. I don't have it highlighted here, but it's this blue area.
Okay.
That was the area for the Chesapeake Bay violation that was resolved.
Okay, so that was resolved because that was up close to theirs. So what we're dealing with was basically a piece of property that was completely not under their control. It was, it was, it's not, it was outside of their, the limits of their property.
It's 100% Kings Mill Community Service Association property.
Kings Mill was never aware of this work, of any work being done on that at all?
No, my, my knowledge is that Kings Mill did not authorize work in this particular area. Furthermore, they've always asked staff permission. They know that there is a natural open space easement along that section of the river.
One of the things that bothers me a little bit about this is apparently, once this damage has been done on the fairly steep slopes of the bluff into the water, it's not really possible to go back and remediate some of these things without causing additional damage.
Correct. One of the options that we frequently employ is replanting of areas that have been clear cuts such as this. And in this particular case, due to the steep slope, it's greater than a two to one slope. And due to the lack of available water, just felt it was unfeasible to replant that slope.
Wilson, how long have you been working in this field?
I've been employed by James City County since 2000. And I've been working in the environmental related field since 1992.
So over 30 years of experience in situations like this? And would you say that you have, over that time, developed a professional knowledge and experience in judging what the state of a property is?
Yes, sir. I would say the accurate.
So it's not, it's not a matter of two individuals who have no particular background or experience disagreeing on how to interpret a particular situation?
Would you restate that, please?
Sure. If we just had two people off the street who were brought into this parcel of land, and they may agree or disagree on what the situation might have been, that that wouldn't be the same as saying that somebody who had your experience would be able to note whether or not this constituted what we would expect to be part of the violation of the ordinance?
Correct.
Any further questions for, oh, I guess there was, there was one I had. Answers all of my questions. Anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Wilson?
In Board, Andrew Dean, Assistant County Attorney, James City County. I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity. Supervisor Noel, you had talked about the open space easement and the violation of that. So just regarding our ordinance, because counsel has raised some issues there, so I'll endeavor to be brief. But it's that, our statute, that statute Mr. Wilson referenced then, that ultimately was on the PowerPoint presentation, Section 814, Long Term Maintenance of Permanent Stormwater Facilities. Paragraph D of that statute actually talks about what the county shall require in order to facilitate this long-term maintenance of stormwater facilities on large properties like the property owned by Kings Mill Association, KCSA, which, as we talked about, is where the work was done here. And so just reading a brief part of that statute, it says, "The county shall require the provision of long-term responsibility for and maintenance of stormwater management facilities and other techniques specified to manage the quality and quantity of runoff. Such requirements shall be set forth in an instrument recorded in the local land records prior to general permit termination or earlier, as required by the county." And then it has some additional parameters there. So pursuant to that requirement, this open space easement that we talked about was ultimately recorded. So it was recorded against the property, the KCSA property, where I think we've heard work was done. Exactly what the scope of that work is, is the subject of some discussion here, but, but work was done that disturbed the natural open space, as we'll call it there. So just to read briefly from that recorded easement, and you saw a clip on the PowerPoint presentation, but, so one of the numbered paragraphs, and this is on page two of that easement, but it says, "The easement property shall remain in its natural condition with respect to natural leaf litter or other ground covering vegetation, understory vegetation or shrub layer and tree canopy." So ultimately, and it goes on to say, "The activities of grantor within the easement shall be limited to those which do not remove or damage any vegetation or disturb any soil." So that's a little bit different than some of what you've heard discussed today as far as land disturbing activities or plowing. And I would just submit that to the board so that the board understands a violation of the open space easement terms is where we would say, then you go into 814, and you see that long-term maintenance plan of which that open space easement was part of that plan, part of that way that Kings Mill will maintain compliance with the ordinance and state code throughout the life of Kings Mill. That open space easement is part of what effectuates that in the county. Are there any questions about that?
No, but how come, has Kings Mill weighed in on this at all as far as you've come on my property and basically done whatever you want? I know if it was another neighbor and you said, you know, I don't like that hedger, I'm going to cut it down, you would have an issue. Has Kings Mill said anything about any of this?
Kings Mill had, Kings Mill has had discussions with the county about the issue there, waiting the outcome of this appeal.
Okay, I look the board for discussions and motion.
It strikes me that the county staff has done everything that we would expect them to do in terms of enforcement of this ordinance, that we have a clear indication that there is, there has been work done on this property that does compromise the open space easement requirements, and that in addition, those took place on property not owned by the appellant. So I would move that we uphold the county staff's decision.
Have a discussion? Have a motion? Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please. Ms. Noel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. All right. Number two, change order, second interim agreement, Consolidated Government Center, Mr. Reinhimer.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinzman. Before you, today, you have a resolution authorizing a change order to the second interim agreement regarding the Consolidated Government Center. As I'm sure you all recall, back in December of 2024, the board approved Mr. Stevens to enter into that second interim agreement with the Henderson-Gilbane Joint Venture for that second part, up to 100% design of the new Consolidated Government Center. Part of that second interim agreement provided an option with a change order to also do the programming and schematic design for a new library at the site of the former school administration building. In discussions with the board at the retreat on February 7th, and other discussions since, certainly got approval from the board to move forward with this process. So what you have before you is that actual resolution to authorize acceptance of that change order, to do the schematic design and programming for the proposed library, not to exceed $930,000. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
No, I don't have any, I just do not like change orders, but understand why this one is necessary. But just as we move through this, I mean, this is a lot of money. And it's for something that I believe in, which is the library and that location, and I think it's going to be great. Just want to be very, you know, I just want to make sure I put it out there, that I want to just be very careful about change orders moving forward. So, but I'll move the motion.
Any other discussion?
I just say that I agree that we want to be very careful about change orders. It's always a challenge when we get into a situation like this. In this particular instance, though, it may also help us to save some money because of the fact that we are going to be able to benefit from the joint construction of this facility.
Very true.
I think it's important for citizens to know that as well.
Yes.
Hey, have a motion? Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please. Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Noel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Board requests and directives.
I'm good.
Oh, no, no.
We're on loan.
Say it isn't so.
Okay.
That's right.
Last week, I attended the Williamsburg Community Foundation Annual Awards Luncheon. And I would just say, I didn't know much about them at all, and it was really wonderful. And it's so great to have something like that in our community that helps private businesses. Thank you.
Great. Well, we've just had a lot going on. And I don't think we've met since we did our joint meeting with the school system, and, which I thought was a very good joint meeting. And they've got a lot of challenges with their, with what they have coming up with their, and with Supervisor McGlinnan and Assistant County Administrator Reinhimer. And we spoke with Sorenson's Political Leaders Program. I thought that went very well. And then we had our tourism. And then, we had our tourism meeting last Tuesday. And it's... We... Of course, the 250th planning is going on right now at Colonial Williamsburg. And this week, which I think is very exciting, and we're hoping to bring a lot of visitors our way. But I will just let you know that there was a little bit of trepidation at our tourism meeting there. We've seen, you know, typically January, February, they count on a lot of government business to kind of help us through that lull. And that did not happen as readily as it has in the past. And seen a little bit of change in... There was a survey sent out asking families what they expected to spend on their vacation for 2025. And when it first went out, it was about $5,400. And then, when it was done again, I believe at the beginning of March, it was $4,700. So, there's right now, there's a little dip in consumer confidence, which is causing some concern. And but we certainly hope that we can benefit in that we're such a great drive-to location. And hoping that, you know, Washington's a big feeder market for us, Richmond, other areas in Virginia. And so, we really are, you know, we're keeping up the marketing efforts because we really want to drive families to come here. So, we are really hoping for a good year. We've got a lot going on in James City County especially. Got the Big Bad Wolf opening, the new one, the new ride, and of course, Jamestown, and so many things to do. So, send out the good thoughts to the tourism. I did the radio, which I want to give shout-out to Renee. I hardly give any notice. I gave wrong notice this time, but she stepped up and helped me out, and I appreciate that. And then, I met with Caitlin and Carla with CDR, and Caitlin Massey-King, who wanted to talk to me about their new, the building that they're doing on Waller Mill. And they had made a request, a financial request of the county. And so, we'll see what comes out on Friday for that. But one thing that I thought I really wanted to emphasize is CDR does do a wonderful service to this community. And in this new building, one of the things that they are going to be doing are six classrooms for infants and toddlers at, I believe, no cost, and will be income-based. And in an industry, a service industry place like ours, to be able to give quality childcare to those workers is just huge. And that is a big benefit to this county. And then, on Friday, I participated in a presentation to the VACO Certified Supervisors Class with Martha Hooker from Roanoke. And we did it on schools and Board of Supervisors and funding. And I know this is something that has mixed views on this Board, but I would like to formally request that we at least look at moving forward with the funding formula with the schools versus the way that we do it now. I would like to ask that the county study this for a year, however long it would take, and just bring back the information to this Board because it's something that I've been interested in for a long time. I know it, you know, you have years that you have great revenue. You have years you don't have such good revenue. And that's something that we would have to get used to. The school system would have to get used to, but I am interested in learning more about this. So, I'm making that request. I just... A couple of things I just want to make mention of that citizens have brought to my attention, one being Centerville and Route 5. We have these utility boxes that are there. We don't, but a utility does that have been hit on numerous occasions from accidents. And they turn out to just be a bunch of junk. While we wait for the utilities to replace them, I want to thank Assistant County Administrator Pers trying to been work with me on this is, can we do something else so that we're not constantly looking at just this pile of metal? Would it be that everyone drive better? Yes, but that isn't happening. So, we need to do something else. St. George's 100, there is a street there that I've spoken about in the past where there's been standing water in this people's ditch. We've talked to VDOT. It would be moving utilities. They're very frustrated that they have not been able to have this resolved for many, many years. And so, we are continuing. They have reached back out. We are... I'm going to reach out to Delegate Green to see if he might be able to help us with this. But at the same time, there have been another concern brought to us from resident of St. George's 100 has to do with Greensprings Trail and the tree loss that is taking place there, which, when you get down to it, all goes back to the beavers. And so, we've been trying to work through that as well, but there is concern about the water and the worry of that water coming into their neighborhood. We are working on these things, but I don't... I want to acknowledge that these have been brought to us. And then, Mr. Stevens, I just had a question. You know, I follow the Pulse app, which I believe we have been tremendously busy in our fire and rescue. It does not show police activity, so I cannot... But I would like to know, if you could, while we're having these budget discussions, if what the percentage of change has been in fire calls and police activity, please? Because it just seems like it's a tremendous amount of calls we are getting, so...
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. And I believe that's it. Thank you so much.
I had a couple of quick things that I...
Sorry, it wasn't quick.
No, that's fine. In addition to the meetings that Supervisor Larson indicated, the joint meeting at schools and city council and the Sorenson session, also got to attend another meeting with her, which the county hosted, a Chamber of Commerce meeting, where we got an excellent presentation from Ed Harris, Visit Williamsburg. And I thought that was very useful. He also did make some mention about the cancellations being an issue that was sort of something they're trying to monitor a bit as well to see whether there are any changes in the degree to which groups that had planned to come are canceling their reservations. Another meeting that I attended was last Wednesday night at James River Elementary School, where the Acting Superintendent of Schools and a school board member from the Roberts District came out and met with the local citizens. And I attended that session just to hear what concerns might come up. It was very interesting and well-meaning discussion of the issues there. And in line with that, I wanted to make special mention of the fact that tomorrow evening, you know, if you're looking for things to do on Wednesday nights, we got you covered in the Roberts District.
Thank you.
Come on down to James River Elementary School between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM, where VDOT will be presenting some conceptual plans for the improvement of Route 60 East, Pocahontas Trail, the segment one, which will go from the fire station about halfway down to the elementary school, where the streets are expected to be widened to provide a turn lane all the way down, a center turn lane all the way down, a multi-use trail that will extend eventually all the way down to James River Elementary from the fire station, improved lighting, improved transit stops, and other amenities that will be helpful for the folks who live in that section of Pocahontas Trail. So, tomorrow night from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, I don't believe it's going to be a public hearing for testimony or something like that. It's, I think, more going to be displays that will have VDOT staff around to answer questions. I'm not sure about that because I haven't seen a lot of information provided by VDOT about that meeting. But I've been trying to get the word out to folks that if they want to have an impact, this is a good time to come out and influence things before they get too far down the road, as they say. And just one other thing I wanted to mention, which is that I was sorry to read about the cancellation of a grant to House of Mercy to deal with housing issues. And want to kind of give a generalized call for those nonprofit organizations and other groups in the community that may be impacted by changes in federal contracting and budgeting to let us know so that we can have a little bit more of a sense of what the gaps are, what we were anticipating to see happening in the community and may not be there. Because I think we have to have a better sense of what's happening with programs that are especially designed to help our most vulnerable citizens. So, that's it.
Mr. Chair?
I have one thing I want to... Didn't think about it until Ms. Larson was talking with the schools. You know, we don't have a contract. We're talking about separating, staying together, whatever. I'd like to figure out if we could... And I've heard rumors out there that once Hippel gets off the Board, then we'll rework the school contract and change it. I'd like to get it done before I leave the Board and figure out what we're doing. I mean, we've been long enough waiting for this nonsense and this stupidity. And I'll put it out there plain and simple because it's just plain stupidity, this whole dag on thing that has come from Williamsburg, not James City County. Make sure that citizens know it. Came from Williamsburg. If you don't believe that, ask them. Michael Hippel said it on TV, and that's where it came from. So, we need to get this thing straight and get it back on track where it needs to be. And I'd like to see it done before I leave this Board, if possible. Thank you.
Yes, I would just like to re... I won't reiterate everything. But I understand his sense of frustration. Where are we? We were doing pretty well, having some discussions, but we haven't seemed to have gotten an update. So, I'm not asking you to answer that today, but if we could get an update at our next meeting, and I think that would be such a great parting gift for Mr. Hippel, along with a shovel and some dirt turning.
Don't put dirt on me yet.
No, not you, by the rec center.
Okay. March 12th, I did one of my very unusual, get up real early in the morning and go visit our new employees. And it's always interesting to do that. I had a nice group of bright-eyed people there who were out getting ready to go to work for the county. And if you get a chance to do that, to greet them, I think it's always something that each Board member ought to take a chance to do that. I really appreciate it. And I am now back in at the Workforce Council. So, I went down on the 19th to the Workforce Board. So, that... Those were two of my things. That the 20th, I went over to the Coast Guard Station. And, you know, we've had a really good working relationship with the military installations in our area through the Chamber and the Military Affairs Committee. I did notice that early this year with the change of administration, they went into what I would call sort of a lockdown mode. And I found out later that officers of rank E6 and... O6 and above, basically the captains and the admirals, were not allowed to go out into public, to engage in public things for quite a while. I think that they've finally gotten past that right now. And I spoke to the captain. He's actually going to be back at our council, our committee meetings and stuff pretty soon. But I did go and participate in a change-of-watch ceremony for Command Master Chief David Dolphin, who is the Command Master Chief over at the Yorktown Training Center. He's retiring, and he has been absolutely wonderful to work with on affairs with the local government and local businesses and the military. So, he's going to be sorely missed. I do have one other thing coming up on Saturday, the 29th. We're doing the last of the 50th Commemoration Vietnam Veterans Days on March 29th. And it's going to be fairly small over at the VFW post, but I will be the guest speaker. And they made a serious mistake. They asked me to talk about my experiences in Vietnam. So, that could be a long meeting.
It's the 29th to the 30th, is that right?
I do have one request, and that is highlighted by the presentation by the voter registrar this morning. And this is something that we've been going through back and forth. And I would rather do this on a long-term basis than try to deal with it during election seasons. And that is signage to help people locate where the vote center is because there are a lot of people wandering around and have a hard time finding it. And temporary signage has been a problem. It's been... The county's not really happy about putting it out. Some of the local businesses have been not cooperative or whatever. What I would like to see is, I would like to see us engage with VDOT to get permanent marking signs that basically say, you know, like courthouse is here or the jail is there at vote center. And we need just two of them, one on Monticello saying it's in this way, and one on Ironbound saying it's in this way. And if they're in the VDOT right away and they're permanent VDOT signs, then we don't have any argument. And now, people will know where it's at.
Other thing, Mr. Eisenhour, I know Mrs. Sadler did this too, and I was upset. There's no flags at that building. We need an American flag at each end of that building because you know it's a government building if it has a flag usually.
Right. That would be helpful.
And we do need that.
Very good point. Very good point. Okay. That's the end of my request, and we'll look for the reports of the county administrator.
Well, I've got quite a list from the Board, so thank you for that. I'll follow up on a number of those items with you in the near future. I will say, Mr. McGlinnan, since we've been here, our meeting started. VDOT did put out a press release or news release about the meeting. They did say no formal presentation, so it really is a drop-through. They are going to have displays, as you mentioned. And certainly, our residents are asked to come to understand what's going on, ask questions, and provide input. But no formal presentation, again, as you said, March 26, 6:00 PM at James River Elementary. The only other thing I would mention, and I mentioned it earlier, is just the Budget Community Meeting. The budget will be out March 28. We do have on April 1st, and no pun intended with April 1st, it's a serious meeting. And really, we'll talk about the JCSA budget as well as the county budget here in the boardroom at 6:00 o'clock. Public's invited to attend. We will broadcast that meeting as well and try to at least provide an overview of the budget and answer questions or concerns and listen to our residents. And so, would certainly encourage their attendance April 1st, 6:00 o'clock here in the boardroom and hear about JCSA's budget and the county's budget at that time. So, that's all I have, sir.
Can we take a five-minute recess before we go into closed session?
Yes, ma'am. Five minutes recess?
Thank you. Thank you.
I move to certify.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated would speak back going into closed session.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stevens, call the roll please.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll, Ms. Larson, Ms. McGlynn.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Yes, I have a motion to appoint Ms. Lynette Diaz to the Colonial Behavioral Health Board for a term which expires on June 30, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
I also have a motion to do a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement to settle pending litigation.
We have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call the roll please.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I think that concludes, and the screen is incorrect because we're going to adjourn until 5:00 p.m. on April the 8th, not March the 11th.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we adjourn till 5:00 p.m. on April 8th.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stevens, call the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel, Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
We are adjourned.